Mr. Auditor, can I call in a roll, please?
Ms. Manette.
Here.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Wager.
Yeah.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Mann.
Here.
Mr. Loudermilk.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Auditor. Move on. Move on to the press schedule for the preceding meeting, the September 10th, 2019 meeting. If you would, please look at those minutes from that meeting, if there's any corrections or anything that needs to be amended at this time.
just a very short while ago.
Okay.
So I don't know that we need to go through those.
If I'm correct, it's really not anything of too much substance, just kind of scribblers errors, is that right?
There's no substance.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Any other corrections or amendments can be made? There are none, I would entertain a motion to approve minutes from the September 10th, 2019 meeting. A motion by Councilwoman Wager.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. Any discussion? Having none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Manette. Mr. Schweitzer.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Ms. Wager.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. We're now opening up the public comment portion of our meeting. We'd ask those that would like to address the council, please approach the podium, sign in with the paper at the podium, and state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and upon conclusion of your comments, council may ask questions of you or make comments themselves. So at this time, we begin the public comment section of our meeting. It's like there are new individuals, we should make a public comment at this time, so we will close public comment, move on to communications from elected officials, other officials or agencies of the county.
Thank you, Council President and Council members. I apologize for the rainstorm we're experiencing. Okay, it stopped. I don't know what's, that's a particular microphone or not. Well, it's not running live, it's being taped, and that's one of the things that we worked out for tonight. They're not supposed to be running it live. If they're running it live, can you text them and tell them to shut it off? Okay. Brendan Kearns, County Commissioner. It's not somebody's microphone in particular? No? Okay. I understand that there may be some discussion tonight regarding Launch Terre Haute based off the last budget adjustment meeting. If that is the case, I just want to be here tonight as county commissioner and as a former member of Launch Terre Haute to advocate for the increase. They're a tremendous investment in this community, tremendous asset, and every dollar that we invest in them, that does pay big dividends. They've recently expanded to provide social services, services that will protect a lot of people as far as ensuring that they receive proper care for mental health and substance abuse issues. We're seeing homeless issues just go through the roof right now in our community. This new division of Launch is a potential way to help those people on getting services that are much needed, and, you know, they're just, they're growing leaps and bounds, and the additional financial support will help us. Shelley and Tim are here today. When the time comes, there's any questions, you have two great resources here other than just me, but in my commissioner role, I'd just like to share my support. I appreciate your support, too. Thanks.
Is there anyone else from the audience that'd like to speak at this time? Councilman Mann.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items just to bring up for discussion, and then we can move on, but first item regards security for this building, so I'm curious if there is any information that can be presented this evening. Is there any type of plan? Is there any type of request for securing the entrance or entrances to this building? Just as a point of reference for us as a starting point for future budgets to consider. I know that we have looked at various county buildings and providing security for them. This building does not, as I understand, have any security as people come and go. So is there any discussion that has taken place on security for this building?
Thank you, Councilman Mann. I apologize, I missed the first part, I was trying to figure out the noise issue. My understanding is you're wondering if there's anything to address security.
Has there been any discussion with the entities regarding security for employees for meetings like this, for customers that come in?
So currently, we do have a deputy that isn't, a sheriff's deputy, that is in the building at all times, that it is open. We do have security cameras all around the building without giving too many details as to what that entails, but pretty much everything should be covered. It's a pretty good system. We had a situation, I think it was Friday, Thursday, I shared it, was it Thursday you had your last meeting? So I think it was Thursday morning, where we had a situation where somebody came in and attempted to do something in the bathroom that wasn't appropriate for the bathroom, and resulted in this person being arrested. So there are plenty of issues. I think you have five or six entry points in this building. What I would personally like to see is all of the entrances locked off, secured, and then us build a new section to the north of this building in between, well, basically where the overhang is. Have that be a common area where you have a facilitator, so you come in, you share with that person what your needs are, and they can navigate you to the right department. I know for a lot of us, we're not sure whether we go to the treasurer, or the recorder, or the assessor, or the commissioner's office, so, you know, as far as looking towards the future, that's what I envision, and that would also help secure the building. We're also dealing with an issue with the juvenile center right now relative to parking, or lack thereof. So this week has been an absent week for us because of the conference in French Lick, but Thursday or Wednesday, we did have a discussion on improvements that needed to be done over there. So I do see a formal plan, not at this moment, but as far as a potential of one soon, absolutely.
Thank you. If I may.
Sure.
This also, I guess, would involve commissioners, possibly assessors' office. Educate me, I'm hearing within the last 10 days that the international property, international paper property, there is a plan to utilize it, say, within a five-year or 10-year opportunity for somebody to come in, make a plan, lease it. Right now, it's my understanding that there are no property taxes being paid. The county owns it, so there are no taxes. Depending on use, taxes could be paid.
Yes.
Is that correct? So when I was listening to the media coverage of it, my sense was selling it is not an option.
Oh, no, selling is an option.
Okay.
It's one that I am not supportive of, I can't speak on behalf of the other two.
Okay, so, but selling it would get it, it wouldn't be property the county owns anymore, and if it were going to a private entity, there is a possibility the taxes would be paid, where currently there aren't being paid. So if this proposal gets made, and let's say there is a private-public use out of it, what would be the opportunities for taxes to be collected off that land that currently doesn't have taxes being paid on? So is there, just educate me on this in a general sense.
So hypothetically, a music venue? If a music venue were to utilize 30 of the acres, the county would still own the land, the structures would be owned by the county, but the revenue that would come in would be the heads and beds, as we talk about people coming in town, hopefully spending more money, income derived from that facility, personal income from people that work there. It would be tax generating, it would not necessarily be from property taxes. But keep in mind, when the county council purchased that on behalf of the commissioners, the previous owner is not paying property taxes on it either.
Right, I'm just, this is part of my education as we're going through this here.
The public-private.
What could be, what could go on it that could have property taxes paid? Because selling it, I get that.
We'd have to sell it.
For any use.
Kevin, are you okay with me sharing a little bit from our discussion last week about the exemptions? We have close to $1 billion in exemptions in Vigo County of property taxes, almost $1 billion. That's universities, let me rephrase that, that's educational facilities, it's healthcare operations, it's property that we own, property the city owns, churches, organizations that are classified as an education-type facility. For example, if I have 10 acres and I have four miniature horses there, and I say it's an education facility, it could be tax exempt. So we have almost $1 billion in exemptions in Vigo County. We're talking about 62 acres of the IP property. While that would be money, I'm not, I think, where we at, I think the tax bill is $54,000 or $55,000 is what they owed, but I'm not sure over how many years that was, and I don't expect you to recall, but it would definitely be a way to generate income, but, you know, what's very common now is for the government to own the land and partner with a private entity, that's a public-private partnership. And a lot of us in this room were involved in that decision to make that purchase, and that's what we envisioned, was that we could use that property to say, hey, we've got something here for you, come to us. I'll expand on that if you're okay with it. Last Friday, I communicated with, in some form, 10 potential businesses for that property that I reached out to. Amusement parks, entertainment venues, people that put together large athletic complexes, very similar to what's in Hamilton County. So that's how that property could work, which would generate taxes, revenue, heads and beds, it would be a strong economic driver. I'm not sure I'm exactly answering your question, Mr. Mann. Actually, I will answer your question. Will it generate property taxes? No. Now, we can sell it, but we haven't had anybody come to us saying, hey, I'd like to buy that. It is, it's a neat facility, if anybody would like to walk around it, we'll definitely arrange tours.
So selling it is a possibility? It is not the preferred possibility?
It's absolutely a possibility.
Thank you.
Hi. You have questions for me, too, while I'm here? Okay. I'll hang out, though.
I just wanted to update the council on projects that we're working on. I think I noted, I think I noted, thank you, I think I noted several months ago that we were going to, a group of us were going to start working on an abatement scoring process. Been having meetings which Councilman Morris and Councilman Schweitzer have been able to attend, along with Calissa, members of the city council, Steve Witt, and Michelle Edwards has been able to, Edwards, the city clerk, has been able to attend some of those. So we have been, we have been making some progress, I think. I'm hopeful that we might have a draft, at least something to talk about perhaps by our November meeting. We've got two meetings left to go in October, so I just wanted to say that I hope to have something that we can bring to you for your, at least, initial consideration to see where we are before the end of this calendar year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schweitzer?
I'm good.
Councilman Thompson?
I don't have anything.
Councilwoman Wager?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
No, thank you.
Councilman Mann, do you have anything further?
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. I just wrote briefly, as was stated earlier, this meeting is being recorded tonight. I thought it was probably appropriate to not have a live streaming tonight, just because the council was not given advance notice. I thought that was probably the appropriate thing to do. I would, I guess, offer this time to have discussion about how the council feels in the future having the meetings livestreamed versus recorded and then placed on a posted site at a later time. So if there's any thoughts or concerns that any of you have about livestreaming, I would ask you to express those now. Councilwoman Wager?
I think it's terrific. Let her rail. It takes people a lot of time coming to the meeting, although it's always nice to have folks here. I think it's great.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Mann?
Where might we find this? Well...
Commissioner Kearns, it's my understanding that Commissioner's office has been using this livestreaming.
Thank you, yes, we have. There is a YouTube channel, it's simply Vigo County Government. If you go on YouTube and the search function, type in "Vigo County Government," it does come up. You can subscribe, if you click on the subscribe, then that'll allow notifications, a person will be notified when the meetings are held. The way the system is set up, any meeting held in this room can be aired live or recorded and uploaded at a later date, as long as it's held in this room. There's a camera right there on me, and there's one right there, too. The control system is inside this room right here, IT has managed it. A lot of us in this room worked on this project, our initial estimate, I think, Aaron, what was it, about $50,000, and then we had shell shock of sorts, and I think we got everything accomplished for less than $5,000 or $6,000, so our IT department did a magnificent job getting it going. So, and I know there's a lot of people that are excited about watching it live, you know, it's going to cut into cable TV ratings, because this is going to be a big deal. Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's up and running. Vigo County Government, YouTube.
So the city council's, my understanding, is on time-warner?
I think so.
That is not the case for Vigo County?
It is not, no. No, this is a much better avenue, too, because you're not, I mean, so many people have access to YouTube versus subscribers to a cable system. And as, you know, in a time where rates keep increasing and people are cutting their personal budgets, cable's one thing that's going.
Is there a timestamp? I know the city council places the date of the meeting, so that it's visible, is that, is it timestamp?
As far as when the meeting's held?
No.
On the file?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a title, so the test runs that we did for the Vigo County Commissioners, says Vigo County Commissioners Test Run, and then we livestream tested the bid opening today for the jail, and it worked flawless. It's neat, there's a big view of you right now, and I would be in the bottom-right corner of the screen, so it's always set up like that. We don't have to worry about somebody sitting in that room controlling the camera. We probably should make sure it's shut off, though. Don't do anything in this room that you don't want shown to the four people watching it.
I think there'll be four.
Maybe five.
I think you're optimistic.
I'm a subscriber, so there's at least three subscribers right now.
Anything further? Thank you, Commissioner Kearns, we, I mean, we had talked about this beginning of the year, something that we both spoke about and we would like to see happen, and as you said, the initial price tag was quite alarming, but be able to pull it off on...
Well, I'm excited about it. It's a great example of how we all work together. I mean, and Calissa, she's not in here, I don't see her, right? She was, she was a, you know, she really helped manage it, and all of us in this room had discussion points about it at one time, so to see that this is actually going, it's kind of cool. Yeah, so thanks, Commissioner. Council President?
Thank you. So if there are no objections from council, next month's meeting, full council meeting, we start the livestreaming. I guess presumably any other meetings we may have in here, whether they're budget meetings or committee meetings, could be livestreamed before that time as well. Also, I'd just like to kind of update everyone that there are still, although it's kind of been slow here over the past couple weeks, there are still discussions about the possibility of a diversion center here locally. Myself and Councilwoman Spence-Manette is part of those discussions, along with a few of our judges, Judge Mulligan's here right now, Judge Roach, individuals from the prosecutor's office, Rob Roberts, Gretchen Etlings, the defender's office, Bill Watson's been involved in those discussions, so we're hoping that this will gain some more momentum and it can become a reality here in this county. So just a brief update, there's really nothing to report at this time, other than the fact that we are working towards that, and hopefully there's something to report in terms of progress here in the next month or two, I would, I'd hope that we can get there. With that, that's all I have. We'll move on at this time to reports from state committees, which there are none, reports from select committees, there are none as well. Moving on to ordinances relating to appropriations. First up, we have Annual Budget Committee, Councilman Morris.
We have two related resolutions here, need to vote on both of them. One, in reference to real property tax abatement and personal property tax abatement. I believe we have representation in reference to those items. These came before the Annual Budget Committee and recommended positively with a 3-0 favorable. Please.
Jeff Lind, Lind Law Firm. I'm here this evening on behalf of Midwest Investment LLC as to Resolution 219-16 and DND Automation, Inc. as to Resolution 219-17. A question came up, and can clarify for the committee, there are two entities with the same business, the same principals, David and his brother, own the real estate under Midwest Investment LLC, and own and run the business DND Automation out of that building, and we're asking for a real and personal property tax abatement, which is why you see the two different entities. Real estate's obviously owned by the entity that owns the real estate. As the committee knows, this would generate an additional investment of an estimated $547,000 in real property improvements, $178,000 in personal property that would be either new or new to Indiana, would be expected to create three, or excuse me, yeah, three full-time positions with an annual payroll of $120,000, and retain 10 employees, seven full-time, three part-time, and they currently have and would hope, and would hope to keep with this project, the annual $358,000 payroll. All of the, all of the jobs come with paid holidays, paid vacations, personal days, simple IRA plan, and employer contributions toward both health insurance and toward the employee's health savings account. I know that many times you see international companies come and seek tax abatements, and the job numbers are higher, the investment numbers are higher, but this is a company that could really use the help they've been here, they've made the commitment to the community, and they, they would like to expand, and with a tax abatement on the personal real side, they can get this done, add new employment, and better serve their customers, many of whom are in the industrial part. Dave can answer any of your questions about the, about the business, about the expansion, and again, we're only asking for an eight-year tax abatement because of the relative size of the project, but that doesn't make it any less important to the, to the business itself.
Thank you, Mr. Lind. Are there any questions from council?
A couple. How long has this DND been in business?
Been in business since 1989. Dave Decker here, I represent DND Automation owner. We've been operating since about 1989.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, you are in the middle of negotiations with large industries to, for a contract, and you may or may not need this expansion depending on these negotiations, right?
Yeah.
And this, this cost savings would be a consideration in those negotiations?
That's correct.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, the suppliers we have, basically are looking for folks that can go, basically, operate international, and that's one of the requirements, and if we cannot get this accomplished, we're not going to be able to do that. That's a big factor in their decisions on these.
It was explained to the committee, but Dave explained more clearly at the committee than he did just there. By going international, the local industry that he's working with have plants all over the world, and in order to get the local job, you have to be approved to supply that company at all its locations, wherever it's located, internationally. So if you get to work, it's a lot of...
Yes, Councilwoman Wager?
I would like to say that I did go tour the facility last week. It's an amazing thing, and I think that if any of you folks in the audience would see what we have right here in this community, it would really astonish you, and they're on the verge of something very big here. We chase around, and any company would come from outside the community and want to build this here, I think we'd be running after them, offering them all kinds of wonderful things. And we, what we have are two fellows here, homegrown, who have put up everything that they have or hope to have, and they're on the verge of the big time, and they just need a little bit of wind in their sails, and we're able to do that for them, and I strongly recommend that we put our money behind them to make this happen, because what they're, what they can do, and you all should go see it, it's quite amazing, it's just quite amazing, and I just wish you all the best. I think you're going to make it. I think you're going to make it.
Councilwoman Spence-Bennett?
Can you tell us a little bit more about the distribution of salaries across the, is it 13 total positions that you see at the end of this? In terms of level, I'm wondering how they compare to, for example, the Vigo County median wage, you know, somewhere around, that would be around, I think, $40,000. So how many of them are below, below or above that, that amount?
Most all of our full-time employees are a little above that. And these new positions will be probably around that. They'll be 45 to 50,000. Or it's a quality manager will be one of them. Got several machinists, which are pretty well-paid. And then also, once this is going, we're going to look for an operations manager.
Do you see some prospect of hiring locally for those jobs?
Yes.
Can you tell me if you all are engaged in any kind of, let's call them, community support activities? Are you involved with any nonprofits or anything in terms of volunteerism or, or those kinds of things?
We're big supporter of the 4-H.
I think that's all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from council?
Before you follow up, and I nearly forgot this, Jeff Lind mistyped some information on the statement of benefits for the personal property. And you should have been delivered an amended version, and it simply corrects Lind's typos and omissions. You'd recognize it with the word amended across the top.
It's on page 122.
And I've slept so many times, I forgot what mistakes I made, but I fixed them.
So, so this was amended after the county, after the committee recommended it?
No.
Or it was amended, this is what we saw as the committee?
It's what you saw at the committee level.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
We need to do them separately or together?
Separately. Now, Councilman Morris, maybe you...
Separately. Yeah, well, yes, we're going to vote on them separately individually here. So the first would be for Midwest Investments, real property tax here.
And before we receive a motion, and you may have stated earlier, what was the recommendation of committee?
3-0 favorable.
On both?
On both.
Thank you. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve on Resolution 2019-16, real property tax payment, Midwest Investments LLC.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Wager.
Second.
Second by Councilman Morris. Off this time for any further comments or discussion. Having none, I'd ask for roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Aye.
Motion carries. Again, I'd ask that we consider a motion to approve Resolution 2019-17, personal property tax payment, DND Automation, Inc.
Mr. President, I move Resolution 2917, personal property tax abatement, DND Automation for a council vote.
Thank you.
Second.
So a motion by Councilman Mann, a second by Councilman Thompson. Off this time for further discussion. Having none, I'd ask for roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We'll publish and see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Next item for Annual Budget is the final reading of the 2020 Annual Budgets of the Binding Units. We have several here. There was a correction to be made to one of them, but I, I would, recommendation, recommendation of the committee was to move all of them except Honey Creek ahead favorably. Also, the recommendation, recommendation was to vote on each one individually as we come to it, and so that if anybody had a problem with anybody's budget as stated, they, they could have a vote or have a question about it instead of trying to lump all of them together. So for that, Mr. Auditor?
Yeah. Yeah. I didn't...
Yes, we have to...
No, no, that's the...
Three, two, three.
That's ours.
Please, for the...
That's the operation. You may go get the last one.
Oh, there's, there's...
And, and I can...
What they, what they say? Why not this one?
Well, they didn't. They didn't include a figure number, so it's okay. It just...
Whatever. Yeah. Let's just make it count. Well... You leave me with it, I think I'll go make a couple calls. Leave me with it, I'll go make a call. Cheers. Okay. So, you know, so we can proceed.
You ready?
Ready. Okay. First one is notices hereby given to the taxpayers of Vigo County Solid Waste Management District, Vigo County, Indiana. The proper officers of the Vigo County Council will conduct a public hearing on the 2020 budget. Following, following this meeting, any 10 or more taxpayers may object to a budget, tax rate, tax levy, or tax, by filing an objection with the proper officers of Vigo County Council not more than seven days after the hearing. The objection petition must identify the provisions of the budget, tax rate, or tax levy to which taxpayers object. If petition is filed, Vigo County Council shall object, shall adopt with the budget a finding concerning the objections in the petition and testimony following the aforementioned hearing. Proper officers of Vigo County Council will meet to adopt the following budget. Budget estimate, $395,520. Maximum funds to be raised, zero excessive levy appeals, zero current tax levy, zero. Let me just read them all at once, and then you can vote on them separately. I'll just...
Okay.
Notice is hereby given to the taxpayers of the Terre Haute International Airport, Honey Creek Fire Protection District, Nogoshan Fire Protection District, Lost Creek Fire Protection District, Prattton Fire Protection District, Riley Fire Protection District, Sugar Creek Fire Protection District, Vigo County, Indiana. The proper officers of Vigo County Council will conduct a public hearing on the year 2020 budget. Following, following this meeting, any 10 or more taxpayers may object to the budget, tax rate, or tax levy by filing an objection with proper officers of Vigo County Council not more than seven days after the hearing. The objection petition must identify the provisions of the budget, tax rate, or tax levy to which taxpayers object. If petition is filed, Vigo County Council shall adopt with the budget a finding concerning the objections in the petition and testimony presented. Following the aforementioned hearing, proper officers of Vigo County Council will meet to adopt the following budgets. Budget estimate for Terre Haute International Airport, $3,146,858. For Honey Creek, $3,023,850. Nogoshan Fire Protection District, $200,000. Lost Creek Fire Protection District, $204,400. Prattton Fire Protection District, $318,000. Riley Fire Protection District, $555,256. Sugar Creek Township Fire District, $619,914.
Get them all? Okay. All right. Been some discussion. My thought originally was to vote on each one of these individually. So I imagine your pleasure to, if you want to vote on one, and we have a Honey Creek, I think, we need to take separate, or you want to do each one individually. There are consensus here. I applaud your choice of each one individually. Individually? Okay. All right. Okay. Solid Waste Management District reviewed four B's in the management and the reports, some, and passed the Annual Budget Committee with a 3-0 favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman Morris. Any questions or comments about the Solid Waste Management District? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion by Councilwoman Wager?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. Off this time for discussion. Having none, ask for roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item is Terre Haute Regional Airport budget. It passed the committee 3-0 favorable. It consists of three documents. Is that correct? Rainy Day, Special Airport General, and Special Airport Communitative Building.
I think there's a fourth document also.
Is there a tip fund? But it is Z.
Yeah, they did not have budget.
There are, there are four sheets, but three active funds is how it was explained earlier.
Correct. Any questions or comments about the Terre Haute Regional Airport? Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Morris, a second by Councilwoman Wager. Off this time for discussion. If there are no discussion, I'd ask for roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Taking these in order, the next is the Honey Creek Fire Protection District. There was some question about line item. They had a meeting. We have the minutes, I think, for a recommendation where they changed that from the Fire Protection District, the, and we... Mr. Auditor, can you clarify this? Pass it with a recommendation to reflect the update?
Yeah, the line 11 shows a 130, a negative $137,213 operating balance, and that should be amended to be 143,054.
Mr. Shackelford? Say that number again, please.
143,054. The math was just...
Plus?
Yes.
Mr. Shackelford, would you like to speak?
Council President Loudermilk and council members, the reason for this change came up when we went to our budget workshop for 2020. We had voted to approve $135,000 for the second part of our 800 megahertz radio purchase and $300,000 for a new tanker that needs to be replaced. In order for us to do this, we had to have a reduction in our 2019 cumulative spending. And we passed a resolution. A copy came to the auditor's office for the council, and it's been submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance to cut our 2019 cumulative fund expenditures $144,000. We have spent $155,000 from that account during 2019, all spent after July 1. And we will spend no more from this account for the remainder of this year. And the tanker that we are replacing is a 1978.
Thank you for that explanation. Are there any questions, Mr. Shackelford?
I am sorry to the council and the auditor's office for all of this problem, but didn't...
and $300,000 for a new tanker that needs to be replaced. In order for us to do this, we had to have a reduction in our 2019 cumulative spending. And we passed a resolution. A copy came to the auditor's office for the council, and it's been submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance to cut our 2019 cumulative fund expenditures We have spent $155,000 from that account during 2019, all spent after July 1. And we will spend no more from this account for the remainder of this year. And the tanker that we are replacing is a 1978.
Thank you for that explanation. Are there any questions, Mr. Shackelford?
I am sorry to the council and the auditor's office for all of this problem, but didn't foresee it, and...
It's good to have it cleared up now versus later.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Councilman Mann?
Is the auditor comfortable with the changes, the recommendations, and everything that's being made? Mr. President, I move that council accept the 4B on Honey Creek Fire Protection.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Mann, second by Councilman Morris. I'd offer this time for discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Banat?
Aye.
Mr. Switzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item is the Lost Creek Fire Protection District. It's been through committee with a three O favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman Morris. Any comments or questions about the Lost Creek Fire Protection District? There are none? I entertain a motion to approve.
Ms. Banat? I'm jumping the guy.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve by Councilman Wager, a second by Councilman Spence Benet. Full start. Off this time for additional discussion. There is none, I'd ask for roll call vote now.
Ms. Banat?
Aye.
Mr. Switzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is the Prairie Fire Protection District. It also moved ahead to full... Oh, Nogoshan, I'm sorry. I skipped one. Nogoshan Fire Protection District, it moved ahead with three O favorable.
Thank you, Councilman Morris. Any questions or comments about the Nogoshan Fire Protection District? I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Councilman Thompson, a second by Councilman Wager. There is no additional discussion. I would ask for roll call vote, please.
Ms. Banat?
Aye.
Mr. Switzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is the Prairie Fire Protection District. It also moved out of committee with three O favorable.
Thank you, Councilman Morris. Off this time for discussion and comments. If there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Thompson, a second by Councilman Wager. There are no comments or discussion, I would ask for roll call vote, please.
Ms. Banat?
Aye.
Mr. Switzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is the Riley Fire Protection District. It also moved out of committee with three O favorable.
Thank you, Councilman Morris. Are there any questions or comments about the Riley Fire Protection District? I'd ask you to address those at this time. There are none, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Thompson, a second by Councilman Wager. There are no questions or comments? I'd ask for roll call vote, please.
Ms. Banat?
Aye.
Mr. Switzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. The last binding unit we have on this evening is the Sugar Creek Fire Protection District. It also moved ahead out of committee with a three O favorable.
Thank you, Councilman Mann. Are there any questions or comments about the Sure Creek Fire Protection District? If there be none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. President, I move Sugar Creek Township Fire Protection District for approval.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Mann, a second by Councilman Wager. There are no questions or comments? I'd ask for roll call vote, please.
Ms. Banat?
Aye.
Mr. Switzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to bring up the final reading of the 2020 annual budget of Vigo County at this time.
Thank you. Do the reading. Notice is hereby given to the taxpayers of Vigo County, Indiana, that the proper officers of Vigo County will conduct a public hearing on the year 2020 budget. Following this meeting, any ten or more taxpayers may object to a budget, tax rate, tax levy by filing an objection petition with the proper officers of Vigo County not more than seven days after the hearing. The objection petition must identify the provisions of the budget, tax rate, or tax levy to which the taxpayers object. If a petition is filed, Vigo County shall adopt with the budget a finding concerning the objections in the petition and testimony presented. Following the aforementioned hearing, the proper officers of Vigo County will meet to adopt the following budget. Budget estimate is $67,611,200. Maximum estimated funds to be raised, $36,222,527. Excess levy appeals, zero. Current, the current tax levy, $32,887,771.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to thank the committee, Councilwoman Wager, Councilman Mann, Auditor's Office, certainly our administrator, and many hours of work going into this annual budget. Some high points of it are, at this point, we've agreed to a 4% pay increase for county employees. This would include county employees, merit officers, and elected officials. Increase to the part-time help from $1020 to $12. One of our concerns that had been expressed was with the juvenile center, with parks, the assessor, with building inspection, and jail staffing. So we moved that ahead, and we also increased the part-time help to the jail staffing from $220 to $1325. And that would also include the juvenile center. The increases in budget lines when requested, gasoline was increased 10%. We used our PSAT tax to fund 911 dispatch 100%. That helped tremendously with this budget as the city has dropped away from paying their part of this $400,000 in 2018 and close to $700,000 in the previous years. So the county now pays all of that, pays it out of the PSAT. There were some very interesting things in the edit about an account. The walkway to West Terre Haute is going to be funded out of the edit, and it's matching monies. It's a big project. Been assured, we have been assured by the engineer that it's going to be something that we can, community can be very proud of. They're continuing with the Spring Hill Road widening and improvement. Many of us know that the widening and improvement between Seventh Street and Third Street is done, and that will continue from Seventh Street to Canal Road. Clinton Road Improvement Project that's been on the books for quite a while will continue ahead. Contribution to the Capital Improvement Board, $500,000, continuing with the Convention Center. And our final year of a $400,000, $2 million, it's a $2 million five-year project, $400,000 will be put in for the Vigo County Parks Department for capital improvement items. There's been an additional with the grants and funding that we've got. So we're going to get three probation people, additional probation people, and three case managers. These are some of the things that this council and commissioners and county and judges and the, all the judicial parts have advocated for. So that is fit into this budget. All the commitments for our insurance and our pensions have been met. And there's $100,000 in the commissioners' fund for community grants. Again, it's a good budget. There's a lot of work to be done in the county, yet I think that we're pretty proud of the work. I would submit that for approval at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Morris. Is there any other members from the Budget Committee that'd like to speak about the budget?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. I want to say it was hard to make decisions this year because we had a lot of requests that we could not meet. This was just a year when we had to step up and pay the employees a decent raise. And I really want to commend Mike Morris and Jim Mann. They really did step up and make tough decisions. We had requests for 14 new employees, and we couldn't do it. We just could, we could not do it. And the department heads, you know, really were quite understanding, and they'll make it work. They'll just make it work this next year. They needed new vehicles. We couldn't provide all the new vehicles, but they'll make it work. And this is a time when the county employees will finally get something that they needed so badly. We still are not paying them enough, but we're paying them a lot better than they've had in a very long time. And Mike and Jim, I'm so proud of you for working so hard. We had a lot of meetings, and I mean a lot of meetings. Kalitha and Jim and Cheryl and Lorraine, you don't know how many meetings that they stayed overtime, a lot of overtime, when they could have been home with their families, but they hammered it out. And the rest of the council, I mean, we had a really acrimonious year trying to work on that jail. But at the end of this year, I mean, everybody wound up getting along very well, and I would have to say I'm really proud to be a member of this council for all the work that you all done. I commend you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just quickly echo, working with Mike and Vicki on this, it is a fundable budget. It is an appropriate budget for 2020. I can tell you that we are not recommending the use of any of the public safety dollars that have been collected. That is to be collected again for 2020. It is not in the budget to be spent. I would highly encourage us to work on a plan for allocating those funds in the best manner for the taxpayer as possible. We are looking at funding this budget if it is approved tonight, and there is an opportunity for discussion moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Spence Benet?
I sat in some of those meetings, and I want to echo Councilwoman Wager's comments about all of the hard work and thought and care that I saw going on. And I want to say personally, I really appreciate y'all's patience with all my questions. I do have a couple of additional items and a couple of questions. First of all, I want to echo Councilman Mann's proposal for a planning effort to go along with the public safety monies. I think that's just critical for us, to identify the best way to use those funds. I hope to see that start soon. A couple of clarifying questions. One, I just want to clarify, the case managers, the three that have been approved, those are for pre-trial screening associated with criminal rule 26. Is that, am I, is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding. And Judge Mulkin, if you'd like to speak, feel free to speak on that. You don't have to, but that is my understanding.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the case manager was, in fact, was a screener.
Right.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judge Mulkin.
Did we, and I don't know if the timing is right for this, during this process, but did we get or do we expect a budget from the Capital Improvement Board to support their $500,000 amount?
Do you anticipate seeing that?
At this point, they're still in, basically in the planning stages of it. A budget, an operating budget is required when operations begin. During the planning and construction stages, the statute authorizes them to pay the professionals that are managing, the architects, engineers, financial consultants, without appropriation. So at the point the operations begin on the, there, that's when you will start getting a budget.
So it's clear what the $500,000 is for at this moment, that we're, that we put into the budget?
You appropriated, when you passed the bond ordinance, you appropriated that amount for the construction. The $500,000 that we're putting into it now is, it'll be used to pay those professionals for the planning stages and then, and the beginning payments on the bond issue.
Okay. I think that answers my question. Thank you. And then this is maybe just, again, a rookie question. With regard to Commissioner Kern's comments on support for launch, can someone clarify for me our opportunities to address their request in full? Because my understanding at this moment is there's a disparity between what they had requested and what is in the budget? And if that's correct, I'm just wanting to know what our opportunities are to address that.
The request, the commissioner's request that was submitted was for $100,000, and that's fully funded.
Let me clarify. I think my understanding is that Launch's request for county funding was not met in the commissioner's request as entered in the budget. So I'm looking forward...
Where to go from here?
Exactly.
That will require an additional appropriation. So they should go to the commissioners and request that they request an additional.
Thank you.
I may.
Absolutely.
When you go to the edit budget and you look at 33, 341, community development requests... When you go to the added budget and you look at 33, 341, Community Development Request was for $100,000. That $100,000 is in the budget. What the Commissioners choose to do with that money out of added is up to the Commissioners. Their request was for $100,000, Community Development. That money is in the budget that's being presented to be voted on this evening. It is just Community Development.
Well, forgive me, I thought that there was some discussion during your budget meetings about what those funds were anticipated to be used for, and I'm recalling that and sort of registering the disparity between, again, the Launch Request and what the Commissioners had included in as part, as only part of that $100,000.
The Commissioners had made a request of the committee to analyze, and they, there were, I believe, four different entities that were going to receive part of those funds. But in the line item itself, it just says Community Development. It doesn't specify any particular fund. So the Commissioners have some free leeway in terms of how they're going to distribute those funds. They had a plan, I believe, for $55,000 of it that was presented to the committee through four entities.
Thank you.
I'd just like to commend Councilman Morris and Mann, Councilwoman Wager too. I was able to sit in on three meetings. Got a text from Kalissa every day, or two days, another meeting was set up. So kudos to you guys for making all those meetings and making it happen. I'm very appreciative of that.
Councilman Thompson?
The same. Thank you. I know you guys spent countless hours and many days and a lot of headaches, so I thank you for that.
Takes all of us.
I just have just a few questions, I guess. Councilman Morris, you'd spoke about the additional employees, the three adult probation officers and the three case managers, which would be the screeners that were discussed earlier. And I think Councilwoman Wager said there were 14 new employees requested throughout the county. It's my understanding, these six additional employees were based upon what we learned from the assessment from Dr. Ray and his group, Dr. Beck and that group. Are there any other employees, additional employees that have been budgeted for?
There is a, in the appropriations, there is a additional appropriation for, additional appropriation in the Auditor's Office. There is no designation of job description at this time. I think it's $69,258.
So there was, there's money set aside, funds set aside for $69,000 for the Auditor's Office for additional employee?
Yes.
But we don't have a position for which that would?
It would be in the Financial Department. That's including benefits.
Each county employee, I said something during these meetings, and somebody was talking about what they make, and I threw out the figure it was over $67,000 and scoffed at it, and we went through it, and we were pretty much right. I wasn't very far off, was I, for a $36,000 position that costs about $65,000 with all our benefits? We've got some good insurance and some, and retirement and things, and so, you know, I mean, that's where it's at. That's the cost of an employee. That's one of the reasons that we looked at the increase in part-time, and we don't have to pay those benefits. If they can get some part-times to help mow grass or to fill in for some of these officers or something at the jail and this kind of thing.
I guess my next question, maybe I should, before I ask the question, just make a statement. You know, I truly appreciate the time that was spent by the Budget Committee to hammer out this budget. I know a lot of hours went into it. There was a lot of headaches and a lot of stress that was involved in making these decisions. I know they were tough decisions, and I commend you for your efforts, I really do. And I don't want to discount the work that you did by asking this question, but I feel it's my duty to ask the question nonetheless. And I received feedback from others within county government about requests that were offered by other departments and denied, and I feel as though I understand why we denied those requests as a committee. I, again, I commend the work and the efforts, and I appreciate the fact that we were considering giving all county employees a substantial raise that they haven't seen in many years. But the concern that I am getting from those in county government is, if we had 14 new employees requested, why are we just honoring one of those requests out of the 14? And if it was going to be a blanket denial of all those requests, why is there one that's going to slip through on the budget? And I guess my question is, can you help me understand how you guys worked through that decision?
The position where it was requested, again, it was requested by all the, by many of the departments, as you know, as you're well aware of, and the committee came to the recommendation to fund one position due to some different considerations of, some of the unfounded mandates and things like that. So auditing procedures, maybe some additional monies needed for contractual, for auditing, that kind of thing. So that's how it came to that determination. I think, I think that we have determined, I think we have a, I think we have a lot of things ahead of us in reference to personnel in the county. This is just one council person, but I think we could reallocate some positions and not spend any more money and do some different jobs that are required. But that's just one council person's opinion.
One thing we did talk about was in the Auditor's Office this year, for instance, we have 40 grants that they're administering, and that's an extraordinary amount of work. You know, a lot of, a lot of things are paid for by grants now, and that's been something that they've not had any help in getting done. I think that's an extraordinary amount of grants.
It grows every, every day, every week, somebody, particularly in the criminal justice portion of it. And every time new employees added via grant, that's more work we gotta do. And then we've got this whole new financial reporting system.
You know, Judges said, you know, you've got two more employees that are paid for by grants. I mean, that's a pretty big amount of work to do to take care of a grant. I think it is. I mean, I've been in there watching folks work. I've become a grant expert, but it seems like it's stressing them out. I just took them at their work, and they've got a stack of bills in there to pay.
Every time you get a new grant, that's a new whole set of quarterly, monthly, whatever grant requires, reports need to be done. That's probably.
As with anything, the committee had its priorities. Working with the courts, working with the accused, providing opportunities to move people through the system was a priority that was placed high up on the committee's pedestal. We had a couple other requests that we have encouraged departments to work together with, bring back a request with a holistic approach. We're not necessarily opposed to the position. We just want to see if more departments could buy into a particular position and therefore split the cost. There were a number of opportunities, we felt, that were viable, just not in this budget. And so, next budget may be so. Some of the vehicles that we purchased with this budget, or we provide the funding for to be purchased, have been asked for in the past. They were granted this year. So I think anytime that you have a budget, you set your priorities, you look and see what it is. A 4% raise for the employees became an important objective for this committee to pass along to the full council for approval. Whenever you make a commitment of 4%, you are looking at millions of dollars when you're looking at across the board. And so, you have to really take into consideration, what is that investing in? And we chose to invest in the people who work in Vigo County. And so, with that, we did include some new positions. Last year, if you recall, we had new positions. Two years ago, we had new positions. Some of the departments that got positions last year aren't getting positions this year. 2021 budget, it may go back to one of them. So we were tasked with listening, we were tasked with making recommendations, and that's what we're doing here this evening.
Which I can appreciate, all that. As I said, I can appreciate the 4% raise for employees, but quite frankly, I've conflicted here because all these other departments were denied these requests for additional employees. And it was my understanding going into it that there was, there was likely not going to be any additional employees, other than what the courts had requested, and now we have revenue set aside for, I guess, an unnamed position, and that's concerning to me. I want to support this budget, but I'm really torn here. I mean, you're speaking about the priorities, and I didn't hear anything associated to the Auditor's Office as a priority when you just spoke about those priorities. Unless I just completely missed it.
The priorities included looking at all personnel requests. And going back even to the discussions that we have had earlier in the year with the needs that are being placed upon the Auditor's Office by different decisions that are being made in terms of expenditures that are going to be going out through them, and it just seemed appropriate for this committee to recommend to the council that the financial side have an additional employee. That resulted from observation and then listening to information that was being presented.
Do we have a formal request for a specific position?
Oh, absolutely. The one thing that I heard Judy talking about, you know, she's one who does the grants, you know, she was having to sit in your work for that sort of budget, and she was just going reserve because she was, you know, having to do these grants, and she was, you know, absolutely smart. She's begging for help, begging for help with these grants.
But is that a position that we have currently, or is that a dedicated position that we have?
She does other things.
That's a full-time job, managing those things.
Any thoughts from other council members? Councilwoman Switzer?
I mean, what, since I'm a new guy here, and this is my first budget, I mean, what action could you take now if you're unhappy with that one position and questioning what the committee decided this far?
I think, I think really the options you have, obviously you cannot increase what has been advertised. You can, what you can do is vote as is proposed. With any item that's before us, we could always propose things to be removed or reduced, and that is an option. Or just vote on it as it is. I think, am I correct, Mr. Eftner, is that essentially in a nutshell the options we have before us?
Yes.
You obviously cannot increase anything. You're either gonna vote how it is or vote for a reduction.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Eftner?
Just to be accurate, you could increase items with a three-four's vote, but you cannot increase the overall budget.
As long as the advertised overall budget's not increased, correct?
It takes a three-four's vote just to end up.
Councilwoman Spence-Bannet?
So if I understand correctly, this was a position that's been put into the budget, but we don't have, the position description has not gone through the typical process that would precede a vote on funding that position. Is that correct?
The Budget Committee receives many requests that do not necessarily go through personnel. There are times when the annual budget is the first time that a position is brought before us. There is a position similar to what is being asked for in the Auditor's Office. Is that correct?
Did you all, in your discussions about this position, receive any information from the Auditor's Office about what the, if you will, the goals of this position are? What will be better? What will be affected? What the impact of this position will be when hired?
I did. I mean, we sat and talked to them, I mean, we were here and they were there, and, you know, we were talking about doing the grants, doing the payroll, you know, we were talking about we'd take up that slack. That was the crux of the conversation, about getting another employee.
Were there any specifics about, how far are we behind with grants and how?
I did not have time to talk about that, no. I sure didn't.
We've been written up a couple of times in our audit reports for lack controls, deficiencies in, in grants, in the area of grants. It's just a, you know, it's a full-time job now, meeting the reporting requirements for those, for the various grants we've got. They're all different, and you've got to keep up on what this agency wants and that agency wants, and when their deadline is. It's something.
And has that cost us money in any way as a county?
It potentially can.
Is the number of grants increasing?
Absolutely.
The, if I may, am I correct that two of the positions that are coming through the courts out of the six are grant-funded?
And then the drug court got a new grant, and then the other defenders got grants recently to give their feelings.
I want to, I'm recalling that you all put all of the positions on the whiteboard one day and looked at sort of everything, straight up, heads up, with all of these positions in consideration while you were making this decision. So I just want to reflect on the fact that you all were looking at everything together to understand and to try to think about what you would approve.
And if you recall, we had full-time help and part-time help. And we looked at a way to help part-time, and that was through increased wages. With this particular request, with the courts and with the Auditor's Office, that the determination was made, those are the positions that we want to recommend to the full council. was made, those are the positions that we want to recommend to the full council. You may want to inquire as to if this budget does not get passed tonight, what is the timeline?
These need to pass, or these need to pass by the court.
We'd have to recess.
I can't, I guess I shouldn't say I can't, but I wouldn't imagine there's a scenario where we can't get the budget passed tonight. I think there's only one item that's being questioned out of many items that are before us. But I think it just comes down to the pleasure of the council. If you want to move forward as it's submitted, so be it. If there's someone that would like to offer up an amendment, then that could be discussed as well.
Is that a motion at this time? Is that the appropriate action to follow up on what you just said?
Yeah, and the floor's open for motion. If there's no further discussion, I mean.
So I'm imagining that the amendment would eliminate that position from the budget, but we would recognize that at a later date, that position might come through a process, through the Personnel Committee, et cetera, for, and a budget adjustment presumably, to fund that position. Is that correct? There's no rule that if it doesn't come through now, you have to wait a year to propose it again, or something like that?
I would say not, since it wasn't a named position. Is that correct, Mr. Eftner?
But typically, as I recall, the rule indicates that if there were a proposal brought before the Budget Committee and was not approved, then it would have to wait. I don't remember the exact wording of that. Give me a second. Okay. I can. Any appropriation requested as a part of the county's annual budget, which was considered by the committee on the annual budget, to be deleted or removed from the annual budget by amendment as reported and submitted to the council by the committee on the annual budget, not included in the annual budget as adopted by the council, as an issue, is precluded for further consideration for 12 months. Question five.
Could you repeat that last part? Unless what? A request is filed with the secretary? Meaning?
No, no. It's precluded from further consideration for a period of 12 months from the time it was filed, the request was filed.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Do we actually have an appropriation requested? It was heard.
It wasn't.
It was not? So would that qualify, then, Mr. Eftner? In your opinion?
Well, I suppose, yeah. By technicality, it was not. It was not an appropriation requested. Yes, it is not.
Subjected to 12 months?
Subjected to 12 months, true.
Is that clear, Ms. Mudd?
That being the case, what I just think I heard is that this could, this matter, this request for a position could be made during the course of the next budget year. With that understanding in mind, I would propose, I don't know exactly how to say this, an amendment to the budget for 2020 to remove that proposed position.
I think that would be appropriate, assuming that the facts are stated correctly.
Say it again, I couldn't hear what your official opinion is.
What I said was, I think that amendment would be appropriate, assuming that the facts as stated were correct. That is, that an appropriation was requested by the, or was not.
Was not.
I'm sorry. Was not requested by the auditor.
Well, we should know whether the appropriation was requested by the auditor's office, right? Do we know that? That it was not? That it was not? It was not?
It was my understanding that it was, and that we've been in the budget, that we not been in the budget.
The amount of $69 put in the 100s and the payroll salary for the expense of an additional person.
I'm going to share this. In the previous year's budget, we had a department not request any employees. And upon talking to them and hearing them, we encouraged them to put their employees in. And that was for the jail, that was with the correctional officers, and they had not placed the additional officers in the budget request. But through our discussion with them that day, the decision was made to put the request in for the correctional officers. And as it turned out, those correctional officers, in part, were funded, and then later were additionally funded. In fact, they're going to be before us, I would assume, next month. And so, there is practice for what was done, because we do listen to different departments, and we make recommendations, and they can act on them or not act upon them. And in the budget for this year, the '19, that was done. We thought it was appropriate. For the 2020 budget, we have done a similar piece to this, and thought it was appropriate for the auditor's office. Once again, all we are making is a recommendation to the full council, so whatever the full council chooses to do is certainly appropriate here. But I think part of being a representative is listening to folks. And I would like to think that when we are listening, that we are willing to act when we believe there is something that is needed. And the council voting 3-0 does indicate for this budget, that this is what the committee believes is best for the county. What is decided here tonight is what is going to go for the budget of the county. So, the meetings were open to all of us to come over time. Several of you have shared that you were able to put your point of view in, and there were times when you were able to have input, where your area of expertise came into play. And we greatly appreciate that. And so, the more information that we have, the more informed we can be to make those decisions.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Eftner.
I might also add that I don't see a problem with bringing this up as an additional appropriation, also because it was not deleted or removed by the Budget Committee, by the council, the whole of it, just. I still think it would be appropriate, or it could be submitted as an additional appropriation during 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Eftner. Any other thoughts or comments?
Did I make a motion? I thought I made a motion. Did I actually make the motion?
Yes. If there is a motion such as this, do we need the dollar figure attached to it as well?
Have we tried to make it more clear?
Right. Dwyer, Councilman Morris, do you know what that figure is exactly?
$69,238, or $58, I think. $58.
$268? $69,268?
$69.
$268. Thank you. Yes?
Can I make a suggestion? Instead of deleting it from the budget, because all of the documents are set up to be signed and submitted to Gateway, is it possible that you could transfer it to an account in the council budget, so you have control over that? So, overall, in the general fund, the total would not change, but the control of the appropriation would change?
So nothing would change with the total, just the location of the funds?
And that way, all of the documents that are prepared, signatures are still accurate?
Does that make sense?
There is an account in the council budget, this payroll adjustment, that would be appropriate.
So if that's, Councilwoman Spence-Bannet has a motion on the floor, if that is her pleasure to do what was suggested by Ms. Miller, then you would have to rescind?
I withdraw my motion.
So motion's withdrawn?
I would make a motion to approve the budget for 2020 with a change to transfer an amount of $69,269 to the payroll adjustment account.
$268.
$268. To transfer an amount, $69,268 to the payroll adjustment account that is managed by the county council, for consideration of this position at a later date.
So we have this amendment before us from Councilwoman Spence-Bannet. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Thompson. Offer this time for further discussion or comments. Councilman Mann?
So the way the amendment reads, we're approving the budget, but we're approving it as amended, and it hasn't been amended?
Well, I think, yes, I agree with what you're saying. And the motion was that you approve the budget with this amendment. And there's no reason you can't do it that way, but you need to understand that remainder of the budget, there's not an opportunity to.
You're approving?
amend the budget, if anyone so chooses. Normal process is to amend the budget and then seek to pass the budget. It can be done.
Is there any other, since we're in discussion, are there any other items that are being considered for amendment? With that, I don't know. I think we can move forward.
Yes. Yeah, I think, you know, you can consider the motion, and that the motion is to approve the budget with that amendment.
All right, you have to educate me on this.
Well, it's probably not the preferred way to do it, but it can be done.
We are voting to approve a budget recommended by the committee to full council, but it's not the full budget.
No, it is, it's the full budget with the amendment.
So either way, if it doesn't pass, or it passes, it's one vote.
I withdraw my amendment as stated. I apologize. I move to amend the budget to transfer the amount of $69,268 to the payroll adjustment account that is managed by the county council.
So we have a motion before us. Is there a second?
I second.
So a motion before us from Councilwoman Spence-Bannet, a second by Councilman Thompson. Offer this time for discussion or comments. Councilman Mann?
Can we have it read, please?
Pardon?
Can we hear the amendment? Someone write it down. Probably ought to know what we're going to be voting.
I move to amend the budget to transfer an amount of $69,268 to the payroll adjustment account that is managed by the county council.
So we have a motion before us. Is there a second?
I second.
So a motion before us from Councilwoman Spence-Bannet, a second by Councilman Thompson. Offer this time for discussion or comments. Councilman Mann?
Can we have it read, please?
Pardon?
Can we hear the amendment? Someone write it down. Probably ought to know what we're going to be voting.
I move to amend the budget to transfer an amount of $69,268 to the payroll adjustment account that is managed by the county council.
Should there be a "from"?
From the payroll line, salary line, and the insurance lines in the auditor's fund, or account, rather, department.
The entire appropriation of that position to group insurance.
To group insurance?
From group insurance.
It would have to be from the group insurance of the auditor's office?
From the group insurance of the auditor's office.
So we have a motion, Councilwoman Spence-Bannet, Councilman Thompson, has seconded such motion. Offer this time for discussion or comments.
Are you proposing a new employee for the county council? You're moving employees' pay from one department to another department, so are you looking to increase the number of employees hired by this council?
No, I am not. I am seeking to move that, those funds to a place where they would be available for consideration by the council, when there is a position description, and perhaps a better description of what the goals and impact of this position would be, what its assignments would be, and what's expected of it, so that we can more fully evaluate it as compared to other proposals made by other departments in the county.
Any other comments or questions?
I think, in all fairness, if we're, if we have this much misunderstanding at this point, maybe we should recess for a couple of days, or into next week, to get this figured out. I mean, I don't think anybody up here is extremely clear on exactly what will happen if this passes.
What I would say what will happen is, the rest of the budget is intact, and the $69,268 would be removed from the group insurance associated with the auditor's office, and moved into the line that Councilwoman Spence-Bannet suggested for the county council. All the other totals remain the same, all the other commitments remain the same. So the only item that would change is simply that, $69,268. So the only item that would change is simply that, sixty-nine thousand, two sixty-eight. All other totals and commitments would remain the same. Councilman Mann, how do you feel about this?
The motion's been made and seconded, so I say vote on the amendment. If it passes, then you're gonna bring up the full budget. If it doesn't pass, we're gonna bring up the full budget. So it sounds like it's either gonna have an employee for the auditor's office or it's not after the amendment or after the motion. Everybody up here is gonna have to vote, and we're gonna find out where you wanna be on this budget. The council, the committee has made its recommendation.
Which then falls back to Council President Lautermilke's initial question of how come one department's getting one hire and the rest are not? So either we give them one hire and we increase the raise by four percent and continue on?
The motion, as I understand it, that's been seconded is to eliminate a proposed position, not an existing position, a proposed position in the auditor's office, as I understand the amendment. So the seven of us are gonna have to vote whether we want the 2020 budget to include an additional employee in the auditor's office. That's my understanding of what's before us now.
Any additional comments or questions? If there are none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Benet?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Weger? Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Nay.
Mr. Lautermilke?
Aye.
Moving on, would accept, or I'm sorry, entertain a motion to approve the 2020 budget as amended?
As president, I would make a motion to approve the 2020 annual budget as proposed with the amendment.
Councilman Morris has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. Offer this time for discussion and comments. Having none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Benet?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Weger? Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermilke?
Aye.
Okay, counsel, the next item is the salary ordinance, compensation policies for the employees of the county. As stated previously, this includes a four percent raise across on a base salary of all county employees, less merit officers and elected officers, which, officials, which we will vote on next.
What was the outcome of this?
This was, we worked on this pretty hard, too. It was, it was some wording that we modified and when we did that, a few places that it was a three oh favorable.
Thank you. Offer this time for questions and comments. There are none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Councilman Thompson.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Spence Benet. Any questions or comments? There are none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Benet?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Weger? Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermilke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is the salary ordinance schedule for merit officers. It's always interesting reading with different things with the merit officers with differences of longevity and clothing allowances, et cetera, but their base salary, again, it was to recommend a four percent salary increase. Three oh favorable.
Thank you, Councilman Morris. Offer this time for questions or comments. There are none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion on the floor from Councilman Thompson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Spence Benet. There are no questions or comments? I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Benet?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Weger? Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermilke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the last item for annual budget is the compensation of elected officials, and it was the pleasure of the committee to include everyone, council included, an elected official with a four percent increase in salaries. It's three oh favorable.
Thank you, Councilman Morris. Again, I'd offer this time for questions or comments.
Can I offer a clar?
Yes, please.
The sheriff's salary is set by state, so that's not a four percent.
Thank you. Is there one clear on that?
I miss what you said.
The state sets the sheriff's salary.
Okay.
Are there any questions or comments?
Councilman Schweitzer. As, as per usual, there's, in county government, there's always some exceptions that are helpful for confusion, salary of the sheriff's not set by us. So, we're not, we're. But, so, we try to make it all plain and understandable.
All right, thank you. If there's no further questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Ms. Benet? Oh, shit, getting tired, been a long night.
Motion on the floor to approve by Councilman Schweitzer.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. There are no questions or comments, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Benet?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Nay.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Weger?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Nay.
Mr. Lautermilke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I will explain my vote as being, I'm included in that, and so not comfortable giving myself praise within that part of it.
I agree with Mr. Mann.
We're, okay, that concludes, we have to do our ordinance for appropriation checks?
Oh, we already.
We did it. Okay, all right, we're done.
We're good.
I am done for a while.
Thank you, Councilman Morris. Moving on to the budget adjustment. Councilman Mann?
Okay, thank you. We have a number of items. First up is resolution of reallocation of existing appropriation 2019 dash zero four, request of council nineteen dash zero forty-eight from the jail. We have a representative from the jail here this evening. This is a transfer of funds from contractual services other to the food, and it's in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. This was three zero favorable.
Thank you, Councilman Mann. I think we have questions.
Costs are going up.
There's a couple things on that. Obviously, costs are going up. When we did our budget, the jail population was figured, it was gonna be two sixty-eight, since that's our capacity, and we had all thought we would just farm out the people to other counties that were over that. However, as you guys are well aware, this is not just a Vigo County problem, it's a statewide problem of jail overcrowding. So there are really fewer and fewer places to take overflow. Our daily population's risen. Also, the biggest thing that we had, we had the juvenile center with their budget, their meal prices increased tremendously in the middle of eighteen, so the jail budget had to pay for that. It was like the tune of almost twenty-six thousand, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve by Councilman Morris, a second by Councilman Weger. If there are no questions or comments, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Benet?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Weger?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermilke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item is additional appropriation ordinance 2019 dash three zero, request of council nineteen thousand dash zero four nine, request of council nineteen dash zero five one, prosecutor infraction deferral. This had four dollar amounts in it. Are we doing the last one separately? Okay.
Last one's a different fund.
Right, the last one's out of, so we have three out of infraction deferral. This did pass committee three zero favorably.
Thank you, Councilman Mann. Any questions from council? Doesn't appear as though we have a representative from the prosecutor's office here.
This basically is a transfer for... Make sure I get this right. The ones we're looking at include two for equipment?
Yeah, but it's an additional appropriation.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's an additional appropriation?
It's a one, three, four?
It's one, I think it's one, two, and three.
I think two is from seized assets.
Okay, so it's, is it one, three, and four?
If I'm reading it correctly.
Make sure we're getting this in the request. Okay, so two is separated out, so we're looking at one, three, and four.
One, three, and four? Does everybody follow along on page one oh nine of our booklet?
This is not coming out of county general, this is coming out of infraction deferral, correct? Which they monitor.
Okay, I got a question. Infraction deferral, was that what we funded part of the drug court out of last year?
Yes.
So the prosecutor will not be funding the drug court, maybe using this money to do different items?
I'm, I can't speak to that. Is it possible to table this until someone from the prosecutor's office can come to A) explain this and B) explain if this is appropriate, where funding for the drug court is going to come from this year, this next, this year, next year, something? I'm concerned about the drug court.
I am as well. I think it would be appropriate, since there's not a representative here, and we have discussed that before, and I, too, am really concerned that last year, it was my understanding that moving forward, the fifty thousand would be there for drug court, and that fifty thousand was going to be used to help with the operations of their current office space, and the commissioner's office, from what I understand, entered into a long-term lease for the office space, five years? Is that seven, so seven years? And from what I recall, last year, this, the council that was in place last year, we operated under the understanding that fifty thousand would exist moving forward. And my concern is, if the fifty thousand is not going to be dedicated from infraction deferral from the prosecutor's office to drug court, where's the fifty thousand then come from?
I can, I can think of that somewhat. I think it's not coming from prosecutor, but I did talk to city court, she said that they can relinquish the second business, driving laws suspended. I talked to Judge Wager, and he said he could speak to Judge Sheen about that, and they're trying to figure out how they can actually physically handle that, you know, dealing with that money and how much that money they can keep. They have passed a thousand cases of that, it's in court. They don't know how much that, that money they can dedicate to, to drug court out of that, but they, 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 they,
Do you have a comment, Councilman Morris?
I'd just make a motion to table it, pending the outcomes of funding, because it's not in the annual budget.
So we have a motion to table, Councilman Morris, we have a second?
Second. Sorry. Go ahead.
Second by Councilman Thompson. I, I think we're all concerned of where this fifty thousand's gonna come from, and I think it's important that we don't run into a similar situation that we did several years ago where we lose drug court. I think most of us feel it's important to retain that, but I think we need to be certain where that money's gonna come from moving forward, so. There's no other questions or comments, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please. Yes, Councilman Thompson? So we have a motion and a second. I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Benet?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Weger?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermilke?
Aye.
Motion table carries.
Item three, additional appropriation ordinance 2019 dash thirty-one, request of council nineteen dash zero five two, prosecutor seized assets. This is number two. On the letter from page one hundred and nine, it did pass committee three zero favorable.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Weger to table, and a second by Councilman Thompson. Any questions or comments? Having none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Benet?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Weger?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermilke?
Aye.
Motion table carries.
Next item is additional appropriation 2019 dash thirty-two, request of council nineteen dash zero five three, juvenile corrections. We have a request for thirty thousand dollars be added to the ones, the juvenile center payroll account, to make up for additional payroll needs for this year. Passed committee three zero. Passed committee three zero favorably.
And it does not appear that we have anyone from the juvenile corrections here to speak on this request.
Well, I would make a motion to approve it, it'd been requested about every year since I've been on the council, there's always additional appropriation for some added costs of managing that place, I don't know. Has there been a year that there hasn't been additional appropriation for? For juvenile?
Yeah, sometime I'm sure there has been, it's been a while.
I second it.
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Morris, a second from Councilman Mann. Offer this time for questions or comments. If there are none, I'd ask for roll call vote please.
Ms. Benette?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermel?
Nay.
Next item is additional appropriations 2019, request of council 19 dash zero five four, highway department. There is a request for $60,000. There, the request is for repairing equipment. This passed committee three zero favorably.
Thank you, Councilman Mann. Questions or comments?
I thought I recall that there was no one from the highway department at our meeting, and we passed without a recommendation, three oh, no recommendation. That was my recollection, am I wrong? There was no one from the highway department then at our, at our meeting either. If there's no one here tonight.
It also includes 60,000 for gasoline.
Commissioner Kearns, would you like to speak on this additional appropriation request from highway?
Oh, guys, can I see one? There's so much going on tonight. For those of you that had a chance to attend the open house that we had a few weeks ago on a Friday, you got an opportunity to see what kind of condition our equipment's in. If I recall correctly, this is a need, because the budget is depleted, to get some of the necessary equipment on the road before the year's up. We recently made some headway, where we had some issues, where a tree cutting service contractor for Duke Energy left a lot of debris along Miami Gardens Road and Flesher. That debris historically has tore up our equipment for cutting grass, taking care of the roadsides. This shows here that our brush hog tractors, which I've been correct, or told is actually bush hog, the tires are bad. I went out while they're doing that work on Miami Gardens Road, and I'm surprised that those things were even allowed to be used, so, you know, this additional appropriation will make the equipment safer, which in turn makes it safer for employees.
Thank you, Commissioner Kearns. Any questions?
Not bad for winging it.
A motion to approve by Councilman Schweitzer, second by Councilwoman Wager. There is no further discussion or questions. I would ask for roll call vote please.
Ms. Benette?
Nay, on the basis that no one has come to speak to us about this.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye, or aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermel?
Aye.
I appreciate Commissioner Kearns stepping up. Thank you. Motion carries.
Two more to go here. Additional appropriation 2019 dash thirty-four, request to council 19 dash zero five five, group homes. This is a request for an additional line item electricity, an increase of $4,500. The utility cost's been depleted, and they're looking at a need for $4,500. This passed the committee three zero favorably.
And there's, doesn't appear to be anybody here from group homes.
I think that we took this in consideration on the annual budget, didn't we, Mr. Mann?
Yes.
As well?
Yes.
For 2020?
Yes.
I, I would make a motion to approve.
So a motion by Councilman Morris, second by Councilwoman Wager. Commissioner Kearns, since there is no one here from Vigo County Group Homes, do you have intimate knowledge about this request?
Yes, thank you, it is apparent that if we don't approve this request, they will not have electricity. I appreciate your, your efforts in keeping the lights on. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'd ask for roll call vote please.
Ms. Benette?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, seventh item up here, additional appropriation 2019 dash thirty-five, request of council 19 dash zero five eight, from the health department. There has been an increase in the liability insurance that is owed, and so we have a request before us of $25,923. This passed committee favorably, three zero.
It's a transfer, isn't it?
Thank you, Councilman Mann.
Additional appropriation.
Are there any questions or comments from council about this request? Quite possibly Commissioner Kearns can address those for the health department.
Thank you, council members, while the commissioners are not directly over the health department, we are over, we do deal with the, the insurance for the county. We are fortunate that we've been able to keep our insurance costs down, we have been able to do it in all categories, the health department, there is high risk there, they are right now involved in taking care of all the employees with the flu shots and, and community outreach, and this is one of those costs that is part of doing business, so we request your approval in moving this forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Kearns. No questions or comments, motion to approve? Motion to approve, Councilman Morris, second by Councilwoman Wager. I'd ask for roll call vote please.
Ms. Benette?
Aye.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Wager? Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That does conclude the budget adjustment report.
Thank you, Councilman Mann. Moving on, no other ordinances, resolutions, we have no honorary resolutions. Resolutions related to fiscal policies of the council are none. First reading by summary reference of proposed ordinances and resolutions. You should have before you the log sheet for the November 2019 meeting. It is, there's several items here before us. The first one, ROC number nineteen dash zero five nine, this is a transfer request, general fund to the sheriff's departments. The fund that are before us are office supplies and animal control supplies, the request is a total of $6,000 to contractual services. That will be assigned to the budget adjustment committee. Next one is an additional appropriation, ROC number nineteen dash zero six one. Zero six one. General fund, jail, regarding 24 jailers. This is to cover payroll salaries, $600,000, social security FICA, $45,900, PERF, $85,200, insurance, $35,000, for a grand total of $766,100. This request will be heard by the budget adjustment committee. Next, we have another additional appropriation, ROC number nineteen dash zero six two, general fund sheriff, payroll salaries, and social security FICA, for a total of $10,765. That will be assigned to the budget adjustment committee. Next, we have before us ROC number nineteen dash zero six three, it's an additional appropriation, general fund IT, over overtime for the malware attack. Looks like, request is out of payroll salaries, social security FICA, PERF, break for a total of $13,000. I'm, yeah, $13,407. And that will be assigned to the budget adjustment committee. Next request before us, ROC nineteen dash zero six four, health funds. We have insurance and additional appropriation, $34,415, be assigned to the budget adjustment committee. Next before us is ROC nineteen dash zero six five, looks like it is juvenile corrections, reclassification of the office manager position. That'll be assigned to personnel. Next, we have nineteen dash zero six six, Lowitz, special distribution, additional appropriation, for a total of $627,901.69, that'll be assigned to budget adjustment. Next one before us is ROC nineteen dash zero six seven, engineers department, an additional appropriation request out of edit for $656,675.52. That will be heard by the budget adjustment committee. Next, we have ROC nineteen dash zero six eight, department's EMA. Looks like there's a host of items here, that's requesting for additional appropriation, office supplies, repair and maintenance supplies, contractual services, education counseling, training, freight, printing, repair equipment, travel expenses, registration fees, mileage, office meetings, and equipment new, for a grand total of $30,500. And that request will be heard by the budget adjustment committees. I'd ask that committees get together, members of those committees get together and determine a date for these items to be heard. With that, that closes our log sheet, moving on, there are no appointments for the council. At this time, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, me adjourned.
Does the videotaping stop now?